All right, welcome everybody to our Tuesday, March 21st, 2023 City Council meeting. We are broadcasting remotely by Zoom as well as having our in-person component here in chambers. We so used to starting off with 6:00 PM workshop. I'm a little, I'm a little thrown off tonight, so I guess we'll jump right in. We'll start with the invocation given by Councilmember Spencer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
Our Father in Heaven, we are indeed grateful unto thee this evening for this opportunity that we have to gather together as a council and as a community. And we give thee thanks for the many blessings that we enjoy in our lives, particularly the opportunity that we have to live in this beautiful area. And we're so thankful for all of those who are working hard to contribute to a wonderful community. We pray that thou will bless us this evening as we discuss the different affairs of the city that we led and guided by thee and that we will make wise decisions in behalf of the citizens here. These blessings and favors we pray for in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We will start off with a roll call here. You got Councilmember Cargill.
Present.
Member Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Van Orman.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Foulia.
Here.
Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
Councilmember Salberg.
Here, Unzum.
Thank you. And we also have joining us on Zoom or elsewhere in the building. As we have our city attorney, Sean Bouts is on Zoom and with us in the chambers, we've got city administrator Mark McAvoy, Kelsey. Your last, your old last name, Kelsey Hardy, our city clerk, and Todd Henderson, our IT manager, and several other council staff members in their offices dialing in. Just want to make sure we acknowledge who is actually in attendance. So we'll go ahead and move on to agenda approval. Mayor Pro Tim.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So you're thrown off too.
Yeah, I know, right? I make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
You have a second? Any comments, questions? Not hearing any. All in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. We have an agenda. All right, so we jump right into citizen comments. So we have a couple of ways to do this. If you're here in the chambers with us, we have little yellow half sheets by the door. If you could fill one out and give it to Kelsey here at the end of the table, she'll get it to me. And if you're online, please shoot a note to Todd Henderson in the chat feature and he will get my attention. Some things to remember about citizen comments, there's a three-minute limit. And this is truly a citizen comment period. There's no replies or rebuttals from the council. But if there's something we need to follow up with you on, we'll make sure we have your contact information so we can do so. Just be aware of the three-minute limit. There'll be a clock set up here on the, on the screen. So it's like I've got one. Ron Van Tassel, please join us. Thanks for coming.
Sorry for my attire. We just came from baseball practice.
Very appropriate for your topic.
Yes, I'm one of the board members for the Spokane Valley Liberty Lake Little League. I'm here to kind of get your assistance with a little bit of an issue we have. The last couple of years, our league has exploded in numbers. We right now have kids playing all the way from T-ball, which born five years old, oh, up through juniors division, which is 14 years old. This year we have just under 500 players and we actually had to close the registration down for AAA, which is eight, nine, 10-year-olds and then our majors division because we had too many. This is the first year we also have a challengers division. And then that division is kids with disabilities. So we have kids with Down syndrome autism. And they'll play on Saturdays and we have kids from the AAA and majors division that are their buddies on the field. They come out there and stand with them, make sure that they're fielding the balls and everything. So the league is getting big and we're kind of outgrowing the fields that we have. That's our biggest problem right now. We have the Diamonds Fields and we're having to share that with some other entities right now. Selkirk School, their field's not appropriate for them. I think they built it too small or something. They are using the Diamonds a lot and that's becoming a problem. We do have Pavilion Park. Most of the time that works, but it's a public park. So we get people that kind of approach into the field at times and we just run into difficulties. Last year, we played our state tournament. If you guys don't know, the Little League has a state tournament every year. It's a big tournament. In fact, the winners of that will go on and play in Pennsylvania. It's a big deal if you don't follow those. And most of those fields, you have to have a grass infill. You have to have a fence. You have to have solid dugouts to keep parents out of there and everything. We don't have any fields in this area that are like that at all. So we wouldn't even be able to host a state tournament if we wanted to. Right now, most of our player playing time, we try to do it on the Diamonds or Pavilion. But any given night, we'll have between four to eight games going on and there's only three fields available. So we have to contact schools and we have to go by their rules. Sometimes they don't let us on the field. It's five minutes before game time. We don't get time to warm up. And every school's different with different rules and every year we have to petition each school separately. So I'm telling you all this to basically do an overall proposal or I don't know what it takes, but to either help us build or invest in some sort of a complex for Little League fields, even softball fields being included in that. Some of the benefits will be we have the kids, we wouldn't have to shut down registration. They can, we can take as many kids as possible because that's the one thing that's closing us down is the amount of field availability. Benefits to the city is we can bring in a state tournament at that point. That's 13 kids. It's a seven-day tournament. It's 180 families coming in here. They have to stay here for a whole week. That's, that's just the baseball part of it. That's not even talking about the softball stuff.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to stop you. Your time's up, but can you do me a favor? Can you add your phone number to this? Because there are some things going on with other entities I'd like to fill you in on. Thank you. Appreciate you coming. My husband was president of the league long, long, long time ago. So if you got a hard job. Yep. All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate you coming. All right, Kelsey, did we have anybody else in here? Nope. All right, Todd, do we have anybody online? Okay, we don't have any further citizen comments. Just remember there'll be another section for that at the end of the meeting. So if you think of something in the meantime, just write it down and hit us up when the time comes.
Mayor, I do have one written public comment that I wanted to acknowledge. From Teresa Van Howland that came in today that I forwarded to everyone on council.
Great. And I will jump in and I know Kelsey sent out copies of a bunch of postcards we got from people regarding the, the library ordinance. And so everybody's got a copy of that. They actually didn't come in in the format appropriate for written comments. So a lot of them were unsigned. We had many, many duplicates. We don't know, you know, where people are, Liberty Lake residents or Spokane or Denver or Tampa. So we did make sure all of the council members had those to read over. But they are not being notated in the official record because they're lacking a lot of information that we need. Did I say that right, Kelsey? Okay, thanks. All right, announcements, proclamations, and special presentations. This one tonight is for National Child Abuse Prevention Month. So Kelsey's going to get us started and then we'll take a vote of support.
So this is a proclamation for National Child Abuse Prevention Month for April 2023. Whereas April is known around the world as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And whereas child maltreatment is a serious and prevalent public health problem in the United States. And whereas child abuse and neglect are common with at least one in seven children experiencing child abuse or neglect each year. And whereas children who are abused or neglected are at an increased risk for experiencing future violence, victimization and perpetration, substance abuse, delayed brain development, lower educational attainment, and limited employment opportunities. And whereas adverse childhood experiences or ACEs are potentially traumatic events that occur in childhood, zero to 17 years, which may include experiencing violence, abuse, or neglect, witnessing violence in the home or community, and are linked to chronic health problems, mental illness, and substance use problems in adolescence and adulthood. And whereas child abuse and neglect are a serious problem affecting every segment of our larger community and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas communities must take, must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas we are part of a greater community that is working to prevent and detect adverse childhood experiences or ACEs. And whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of the city of Liberty Lake, the state of Washington, and the United States of America. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment.
All right, I want to thank Councilmember Kurtz for bringing this forward. Really appreciate it. And I will love to have a motion in support.
Move to support the proclamation. Second.
First by Councilmember Dunn, and second by Councilmember Cargill. Any questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor of supporting this proclamation in honor of National Child Abuse Prevention Month, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, motion passes. So now therefore I, Mayor Chris Kaminski, with the support of City Council, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Liberty Lake and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. Thank you. Sign this. And if anybody else has stuff that comes up, just let us know and we'll get it on the agenda. All right, thanks for that. I'll get back to my agenda copy here. Okay, all right, so we are up to reports and inquiries. Any city council reports? Why are everybody quiet tonight? Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Spencer.
I was going to leave this to Tom if he wanted to, but Councilmember Salberg Dunn and I attended the Spokane Valley Homeless Action Plan Open House a couple of weeks ago and spoke with several individuals and got some really good information. And it sounds like we're hoping to have a couple of them come and present to the council at some point.
Super, super. And Councilmember Salberg, I did see your hand pop up after the fact. Do you want to add anything?
Thanks for saying that, Jed. I've also secured Joe Ader from.
Family promise?
Family promise. I've gone blank. Who will be available probably in one of our meetings in April and I'll talk to Kelsey or Mark or someone about scheduling that.
Sounds good.
Sure, Madam Mayor, I'd observe that what was interesting to me to listen to is Spokane Valley City's commitment to NGOs or agency partnerships to commit social services. An interesting and I think, you know, strategic and useful move, they're really gaining, you know, partnering with other organizations to provide the services that they recognize are going to be necessary for the community. So, you know, and so to speak, rather than staffing up and committing, you know, serious long-term expenses of internally projected staff, yeah, the recognizing partnerships. I'll do props to the currently hired homeless outreach director, Jeff, I'll say. He was who had organized the event. It was presented in an exhibition style of boards, which allowed you to, you know, place a, you know, like a type of target to say what resonates with you in the event. So I'll just kind of listen carefully to the actions of Spokane Valley. This is a, this is a, I'm going to say a challenge for the entire region.
Absolutely. Hey, any other council reports before we move on? All right, not seeing any. It's up to my short mayor's report tonight. Another busy couple of weeks. Some highlights, I do want to thank, first of all, Councilmember Cargill for sending me the official snapshot of a part, a section of the budget that Senator Patton had requested. And it is for funding for the Army National Guard to have money to do the appraisal for the DNR land over next to George Gee and for the, the land that they have over at the Spokane International Airport in, in the efforts to hopefully move this, this either readiness center or battalion for the Army National Guard forward. It's a long process. As you guys know, we're trying to keep it just at the state level because it would go faster, still slow, but faster than it would with federal. So we'll keep an eye on that. So thank you for Senator Patton for continuing to champion that. Couple of meetings over the last couple of weeks, SRTC, GSI annual meeting was a week or so ago. Always a good, good chance to hear some roundtable discussion. This is Spokane meeting. I did check in. Actually, Mark and I are trying to schedule a follow-up meeting with their interim CEO, current finance director. But they are close to making an offer. They have made an offer to a new CEO with a backup in hand. So more to come on that. Their last one retired in November. So looking forward to that moving forward. We've had a couple of meetings on the camping ordinance with another one, two weeks?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. I know it's on my calendar, but things are getting a little jumbled lately. So yes, we'll have that tomorrow. And then had the honor of going to the Girl Scouts fundraiser. It was called Desserts Before Dinner. You can imagine they brought in bait, professional bakers from around the region. And they each got one of the Girl Scout cookies and they made a small dessert. They were no bigger round usually than the cookie. But that happened before dinner and then we got to vote and the winner actually was Bertie's Pie Shop over in Post Falls. But amazing, amazing little desserts. They had did a fundraiser, both the silent auction and live auction. They raised $50,000 for the Girl Scouts for programming and supporting, supporting the camps and everything. And then after dinner, they brought us more dessert. They probably could have skipped, but it was a fabulous evening. A lot, a lot of Girl Scouts there. They did a fashion show through the years of the Girl Scout uniforms and I saw mine from the 1980s, kind of scary. But it was, it was really well attended. They probably had over 300 people there. So we'll, we'll keep you posted. This is the first year I've got a chance to go to it. So when it comes up next year, I'll, I'll share the invite information with everybody. And then preparation for National League of Cities. So I leave on Friday to go to the National League of Cities Conference. It's, I go in a day early because they have executive education all day Saturday. So there's about 10 hours worth of coursework that I'll get to do on Saturday and then Sunday and Monday are all filled with additional meetings and classes and keynote speakers and all that. And then the most important part of it on Tuesday is our hill climb day. So last year was a little bit iffy for a lot of us because we still, you know, were masked and all of that. And so some of the, some of the legislators in DC were not having people into their offices. So luckily we've kind of got a good relationship with ours here. But hopefully we'll actually get some, some office time with Senator Murray, Senator Cantwell, Captain Morris Rogers, when we're actually there on Tuesday. So I look forward to reporting back to you on that. There's a lot, a lot of items on public safety, which is very relevant. And one I'm really looking forward to is how federal decisions are affecting us locally. I will come back for with some reports on that at the next meeting. I think that's all I've got. Oh, Councilmember Dunn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had one other note for us regarding STA. Specifically, the 16th was another STA board meeting. The mark your calendars, July 16th will be the first run of the Central City Line. Watch for announcements and fanfare and an opening ride. The STA board is right now considering carefully a promotional period in which we'll ask, you know, and introduce to people to come and ride the Central City Line fare free for a time period we have not yet resolved. So and just a reminder as a PSA, all of our students in the community can get fare cards for STA fare free. So just remind all the students out there that if they are interested, you can get fare cards for free at your school.
Right. And if we haven't posted that on our website or Facebook page lately, let's coordinate with David and get that on there again. All right, thanks for doing that. Right, next up is the city administrator report.
All right, thank you, Mayor. We're going to dive right in because we've got several items to go over. And we want to do this as efficiently as we can. So just a couple of things on the legislative session. We, yesterday, the revenue forecast came out. Many of you may have seen that. They're projecting revenue that's, that's up from the last by any by, by a bit, but down from the previous forecast. So they're figuring out how to work that into the budgets. The Senate presented its capital budget yesterday and then it will present its operating and transportation budgets later this week and then the House will follow. And so all of that will come together as it pertains to the bills and the process that those are undergoing. Between now and our next meeting, we're going to go through a couple of gates. Both of those are the policy committee cutoff date and the fiscal committee cutoff date. So by the time we meet next, we should have a pretty good idea of what's moving forward and can give you kind of a, a picture of what that looks like. And we'll obviously continue to watch those as they develop and ask for your input as, as things kind of get elevated in priority or lowered in priority based on how they may affect us. Valley Chamber Business Awards. Scheduled March 28th and this is their, their annual awards presentation. And based on past history, I think it's, it's fair to say that several Liberty Lake businesses will be involved in this. Unfortunately, that's scheduled on the same night is our City Council Library Board Joint Meeting, March 28th and essentially the same time. But that is going to be if anybody's interested at the Center Place Regional Event Center from 5:00 to 7:30 PM on the 28th. And so moving forward, our City Council and Library Board of Trustees Joint Meeting is scheduled for March 28th here at City Hall from, from 6:00 to 8:00. Next item, Civil Service Commission. This is essentially our last call for applications before our interviews begin. We have a handful, but this is one last opportunity. And so we're going to take applications through March 31st. So if you know of anyone or if anyone is interested, hop on the website, fill out the form and, and we will proceed to interviews probably in early April. The Central Valley School District's spring break is April 3rd through the 7th. So that's coming up. And then there's an item on here that I'm going to turn the mic over to Kelsey to explain. So Kelsey, take it away.
So I'll keep this brief. Just wanted to make sure that April 17th deadlines on your radar for the personal financial affairs disclosure, you should have received information directly from the PDC. If not, let me know. And if you have any questions, I can put you in contact with some contacts I have at the PDC and some additional reference materials.
Thanks, Kelsey. Last item, this springtime is blossoming calendar has been published. We've got printouts that are available all over the place. This is also on our website and we link to it through social media quite often. One item that is coming up quickly is an Easter egg hunt at Orchard Park that's being presented by the Girl Scouts. There is an admission charge on this, so, so pay attention to that. But that's coming up. And then everything else that's happening through the spring months, which officially started yesterday, by the way, yay, right? So we should be enjoying the, the shirt sleeve weather going forward. Hopefully I haven't jinxed us. So that's that. Any questions about the events or reminders before we move on to some of the other items? Okay, great. The department reports, this is something that we started last month. This is the second meeting of the month. And so we've distributed the department reports and want to provide council with an opportunity to ask any questions based on that content. So I'll open the floor and ask anyone to, to fire any questions away if you have any.
Councilmember Cargill, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, and maybe this is a question for Kyle. I was noticing on page two of the finance report, our budgeted item on the general fund streets is higher than the actual. Is that just a matter of timing? Or is, are we really experiencing that savings?
I'm going to ask Kyle to address that.
You, I apologize, Councilmember Cargill. Can you restate that?
Yeah, so page two of your, of the report has the graphic that shows general fund streets revenue through February 2023. And it says budgeted and then actual. I'm trying to figure out, are, is that just a timing issue? Or why is the total operating so much of a difference there?
Well, yeah, this is just the timing. So you're going to see this climb. This is accumulative. Yeah. We'll see. And as I get through towards the, as we get through towards the end of the year, I will put kind of a delta for you guys to understand, okay, the end of, let's say, May is this percent through the end of the year. So we can kind of start balancing that versus the end of the year. And it's kind of tough at the start because we do have some upfront costs that really skew these items.
Right.
Want to put, let's say, a unfair percentage out there where we have huge upfront costs and that levels out throughout the rest.
So same, same answer then on the expenses one as well?
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions?
All right.
I don't see any. I want to make sure I grab Tom. Tom, any questions? Nope, okay.
All right, next we're going to provide, David Williams, our city engineer is going to provide an update on some upcoming night work that's going to occur on the Kramer Overpass that's making progress. So.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor. City council members and citizens of Liberty Lake, can you guys all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, just real fast. Washita will be performing some night work coming Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, potentially Monday, Tuesday next week. And then it'll be just interchangeable lane closures on the eastbound and westbound lanes of I-90. But all be night work between 9:00 PM and 5:00 AM. Most likely they'll have the work done by, by Friday, but they just want to project out till Tuesday next week. So just look for that. Be safe on the road and just know that the fast lane or slow lane in either direction may be closed due to construction.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions on that one? All right, these last two items, items four and five are both part of a broader engagement strategy that we've been talking about for a while. And so both of these items have gone through several discussions in the community engagement commissions, regular meetings. And they've taken the opportunity to kind of shape both of these things. And they're now at the place where we're going to launch them. And so the first one is the city's podcast and David Gaynor is, is on the line. And he's going to give you a brief description about what that looks like and when you can expect to hear it as we launch. David?
Sure. Hello, everybody. This has been a, I'll give credit where credit is due. Mark McAvoy was the one who originated this idea. And then I and others just kind of ran with it after his instruction. The podcast is going to be called the Liberty Lake Deep Dive. And we'll be doing probably two shows a month, about roughly 15 minutes each. There's not going to be a set structure to this as far as the schedule. It's not going to be like the first of the month and the 15th of the month. It's going to be about twice a month. And we're looking to launch the first couple of episodes sometime first part of April. There will probably be two installments. We'll be releasing within a couple of days of each other. Just so there's not just one episode out there for half a month. We'll have three episodes ready to go shortly. And this will be an opportunity for people to find out about the, the people of Liberty Lake, the city employees, city officials, once we get past election season. And also talk about the programs and services of the area. I will say the, the first three episodes will involve in no particular order. We'll be having our city administrator on there to, for the community to get to know him a little bit. We will also be doing a visit with something regarding the library. And we're also going to be talking with somebody with the police department. And a little bit later on, we'll be having previews of activities, particularly during the summer. Summer will be largely activity-based installment. So of course, we're going to be doing some kind of preview of Bearford the Park, something related to Memorial Day and on and on throughout the summer, probably a farmer's market would be there. Kind of allowing people to know the behind-the-scenes stories about how these events come about and what they can expect once they attend. Any questions from anybody?
I see Councilmember Salberg's hand up. I don't know if that's for after or for you.
For after, thanks.
Okay.
Hey, I just want to say thanks, David. Your outreach here is great and specifically to a different demographic. Really great for the efforts, awareness for people wherever they are.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for David? All right, and I'll go to Tom real quick. Councilmember Salberg.
Just, I'm go, can we go back just one to, if David is still on?
Yeah.
Other, David Williams.
David Williams, you still on? Don't see him.
I'm still on, yes.
David and David, thank you for putting the announcement on the weight restrictions on Mission. David Williams, might you have a, a timeline for us of when Mission might be closed again? Now that the streets are all open and everybody's moving very fast. The question is coming again as to what, when and if we're still going to reroute to Indiana. Do you have any idea?
Right now, we are currently under review for the design we're supposed to receive for Mission Avenue. I'll have actually a better understanding of that probably near the middle of April. At this time, when we do do the work, there will be closures on Mission. So we will be rerouting in that direction. So Councilmember, just know that it is being worked out right now. We are definitely working on design and I will have more information. I will have more information for you mid-April, if that's okay.
Thank you, David. The overwhelming, the overwhelming request is that you wait until school gets out.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I should have said that. The project will not happen. It will not happen. Before the school years out and actually contacted the school district already about that, so. I've got the end dates and everything, so it will take place after school, so, yeah.
Thank you very much.
No worries.
Great, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Not will go back to Mark.
All right, last item, this is the second thing that we we talked about with respect to that broader engagement strategy. The City Academy, we talked about this a couple of times. We've now gotten a final. Schedule, all of our, all of our partners are on board. We even, as of this afternoon, have seven registrations, and so we're targeting fifteen to twenty. We still need at least eight. We're we're gonna have it regardless, but we'd like to have that fifteen number at least. There is a link right on the front page of our website. If you're interested in learning more about the city, how it delivers services, divvies up resources, makes decisions. Please consider looking into it, and we look forward to seeing you on April thirteenth and every Thursday between the thirteenth and June first.
You don't have to go to all of them, but we'd love you to.
Absolutely, and that concludes my report, Mayor.
All right, does anybody else have anything to add before we move on to the next groups? All right, looks like we have Library Board here for their report.
Good evening. My name is Kim Gerard and I serve on the Library Board of Trustees for the Liberty Lake Municipal Library, and I'll be giving you the quarterly report this evening. If you look, you can go to the next slide. If you look at our numbers so far for this year, we have. We currently have twenty four thousand seven hundred books on titles on our shelves. We've had fourteen thousand checkouts. We've had nine thousand two hundred forty-five visitors, and we currently, this is what we're really excited about. We've had sixty-six reservations in our meeting rooms so far this year. That is a third of our entire number for last year, just in the first quarter of the year. We have added a study room to the library, so now there's a meeting room for larger groups and a study room for smaller groups. And those busy, those reservations are so busy, and we are taking that into consideration as we start to dream about our new library. So adding some study spaces and community spaces for groups.
Kim, can I ask, it's just just a clarification for everybody else. The the checkouts, visitors, meeting room is total for twenty twenty-two and the twenty-three is year to date.
Just year to date, yep, yep.
Can I, can I ask one? Does the fourteen one ninety-six, is that for just January and February, or is that actually as of today? Okay.
So that's just the first two months.
Great, thanks.
Yep. Okay, next slide. Our technology update, the library used ARPA dollars to purchase a laptop, three laptop. And one hotspots for one week checkout. We've had a total of forty checkouts on those since May of twenty twenty-two. We have one, we had, we purchased two hotspots, we're down to one. Because a library patron is being billed for the other one. That happens when you check out books, when you check out items. We purchased, because of the popularity of that, we purchased six additional hotspots and for circulation in twenty twenty-three. And if you look at the the Cooperative Information Network numbers, the total hotspot checkouts for that are over seven thousand. For just eighty-nine hotspots, and there are currently seventy-four holds. For those hotspots. Hotspots are a hot item. So, yeah, so we'll be looking at getting more of those. Next slide. Our wonderful group Friends of the Library has sponsored some symphony passes, so people can go check out tickets to go to. The symphony if for January, February and March. The library gave out a hundred and seventeen of the hundred and twenty tickets that we were allotted, and. That's significant because Janie said in two thousand eighteen, we couldn't give those away, and now they're being used to their fullest extent. So that's a great gift from the Friends of the Library. We also have a wonderful teen advisory group, which I think is a great way to reach out to the teens in our community. That group allows them to earn volunteer hours for their schools. They meet once a month with our, with Michaela, our youth librarian or young adult librarian. To plan upcoming teen activities at the library. They assist with our weekly children's programs. They help with projects around the library. They oversee games and decorations at large library events like our Christmas party. And they curate our teen book displays, so that's good practical experience for those teens in our community. There are about fourteen kids on the teen advisory group currently. Over Christmas break, we had a lovely Lego contest, and those are the winners from this year. The one on the bottom in the center was the adults winner, so adults can enter that as well. They, they, yep, they were on display for them in January in our library. Legos, I love it. Our library Christmas party had about seventy people in attendance. Those games there were hosted by that teen advisory group. There were ornaments and crafts and movies. The Gizmo Science Group called the library and attended the Christmas party, and now they sponsor. There's a monthly partnership with them coming to the library to do activities. So the the board has been, we've updated the meeting room policy. We we added a study room to the policy and the requirements to use the room. We looked at the old ones and. Based on recommendations, we made some required, some changes to those. We looked at room capacities and the equipment that was available. And we set the hours that those are available. Groups like the Kiwanis Rotary, Friends of the Library, homeowners associations can sign up for those rooms. The finance class by S T C U, tax help has been offered in those. Alzheimer information sessions, financial literacy for retirement sessions, so those. Are places where the library programming is really reaching out to people of all ages in our community. It's a great thing. And then in February, we went back and looked at that policy again, because we found that we needed to update and have a no-show clause. If you don't show up within a certain time of your reservation, that room becomes available to other people that might want it. Oh, this, the policy.
Go back one, Todd.
Back one, I think we skipped a, there it is. We are currently looking at our circulation policy. And updating that to include new materials that we might have. Looking at loan periods, updated checkout limits, and looking at renewal opportunities for for patrons. So we're still working on that. Summer reading program twenty twenty-three is exciting. It's a reading program that includes children, teens and adults. It starts off with a big kickoff. There'll be a musical guest, animals from the outdoor learning center. That includes story time at the park, a magician. Last summer, there were eight hundred sixty-nine participants going to the library, checking out materials and participating in that program. So that's a a great way to keep kids engaged in reading over the summer and adults. So I just want to conclude by saying in two thousand nineteen, we had that consultant come and look at our library programming. And one of the things they said was that our library excels in programming compared to others' libraries similar in size. And the Board of Trustees, we think our staff does a great job in providing opportunities for people of all ages in our community. So if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Reminding the date on that summer reading kickoff.
So it'll be June twentieth. June nineteenth is the Monday, so it'll be June twentieth. We're gonna do Eric Herman at the Bridgeline High School.
I'm so grateful. And Kim, I just want to commend the work of the board, and I mean, just this visibility, your reporter tonight is so great to understand. The breadth and depth and scope and the actions going on with the library. It's just always great to have visibility and awareness to all these things going on. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Todd, can you go back to that first slide real quick? And this might be a question for Janie. Janie, on the number of checkouts, are we typically slower in the first part of the year? I just did the the quick math and it looks like we're on pace for about eighty-five thousand-ish for the year, so is that typical?
Yes, I would say our December, January, February numbers are our lowest for the year.
Okay.
Our heaviest traffic would be May through August.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thanks.
It's the prizes for the summer reading program.
Yeah, yep.
All right, thanks so much for coming. Appreciate it. And next, yeah, oh, go ahead, Councilmember.
Am I the only one having internet issues?
Mine's okay.
Result, everybody else is fine.
Okay.
Tell us how you really feel. All right, next. Next up, we've got Planning Commission. Joe Man, thanks for coming.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Thanks for the opportunity to kind of preview two amendments that we are recommending to you. To that are additions to the city development code. And the the second one is both to the city development code and the River District Development Code. The first is to allow. Personal storage and R V storage in the C two zones. These are all along the I ninety corridor. We previously had prohibition against any storage units in the city. Except for the two that are already here, and I'll come back to those in just a moment, but. We spent a lot of time on this because if we are going to do it, we want to make sure that they are attractive. We don't want something like what the two that were already existing with the chain link and. Blue tarps blowing in the wind and that kind of thing, so we put some very specific requirements on design. These will be more more like what you see on North Market Street near Hilliard. That design, which looks more like an office building than it does storage. And there's also one out in Airway Heights, it's very similar in design. So we put a lot of restrictions on it. Everything has to be covered by a roof. And we have been working on it since last May. So we spent a lot of time going through this. If we are going to allow it, we want to make sure it doesn't detract from the attractiveness of our city. And the only thing we didn't address, because it's really beyond the purview of. The Planning Commission is, is this the highest and best use of this land? Because one of the things we obviously have to consider, and it that purview comes to you guys, is tax base. And does it give us the best return on giving up that land for the design of these storage units? They can be up to seven acres in size, so they're not small items, but. With the design criteria that we put in, we think they would be quite attractive. You would hardly know that they were storage units. The second one is a little easier to deal with and has to do with building height and how to measure building height. I don't know if you've seen the code from previously, but it was very convoluted and nobody could really define it. So we simplified it. It only took two study sessions to do it. And basically, it's we measure the height of a building from the front facade. That's simple, rather than all of the other details and everything we were trying to get into. It makes it much simpler to to deal with. Both of those amendments were passed unanimously. And I'm open to any questions you might have.
Or any questions?
Just one quick one.
Sure, Mayor Tim and then Councilmember.
Zone C two only? I'm sorry. Zone C two only. C two only, correct. Thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember Van Orman.
Thanks for being here. Question, how how tall are we at right now for the building heights?
Thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five feet?
Yes, ma'am.
At one time, we were looking at one hundred feet. Is that come?
No, we we did not look at that, no, ma'am.
All right, thirty-five, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? All right, not seeing any. Thanks a lot, Joe. Thanks for all your work in your committee's report.
Thank you.
All right, Parks and Art, do we have anybody here for Parks and Art? I know there's nobody.
Yes, good evening, Mayor.
Oh, hi, Noel, I didn't see you.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Great, thank you. Glad to be here with you all this evening.
Thanks for.
Barbara, thank you. Our last Parks and Arts Commission meeting was March sixth. We had a lovely presentation from Spokane Tech detailing. The, basically the budget for the stands for Story Walk in Orchard Park. And a little bit of of upkeep work for the Story Walk boards in Rocky Hill. We are seeing quite a bit of traction with artist submissions for the Hoop Town USA basketball court murals. So that's really awesome. We're very excited about that. Otherwise, we just sort of went over our spring events this year. Particularly on our Earth Day Cleanup Day and the Easter Egg Hunt in Orchard Park. Other than that, it's pretty cut and dry. Meeting.
Hey, real quick, hey, Noel, has there been any ideas thrown around yet with regards to that piece of wood we saved from the the old trailhead building?
Oh, yes, a couple of ideas were brought up, but nothing really that gave us the aha moment. So I think we're gonna tool around with that a bit more.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mayor.
No problem. Anybody have any questions for Parks and Art?
No, that was my question. Thank you.
Okay, all right, short and sweet. We appreciate your 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 help and your work on the on the Parks and Arts Commission.
Lovely, thank you. Well, if you guys don't mind, I've got two boys under ten that sound like monkeys swinging from the fans, so I might excuse myself.
Go take care of them.
Thank you so much.
Bye-bye.
Have a great night.
You too. All right, Community Engagement Commission, Mark, welcome.
Well, Mark blew my thunder for my first item, but I'm gonna go anyway. We forgot to put together. I also had the spring blooming event going on. Starting, it already is in place, like Mark said. We are getting these out. As a matter of fact, I'll be riding around in my golf cart tomorrow, hitting up the businesses. I've hit up about half of them. Just have them put in in their windows or on their bulletin boards wherever it can be visible. One other thing about this is that, as you can see, it's only through June, so we will be rotating it out every. Two or three months, so this will be coming out again for the summer, then again for the fall, and then, of course, again for the winter, so. Lots of them out there. Take them home, put it up on your refrigerator.
Hand them out to neighbors.
Hand them out to neighbors, thank you. The C E C has also been discussing the possibility to help introduce the new Zen City resources. To the city's residents throughout, and what we're planning on using is a mailer card. That could be designed and sent to every household in the city limits. We're also possibly looking at a less expensive or more thrifty. Avenue is placing the mailer in the splash. And it would go out to ten thousand people rather than five thousand through the mailer. So that's one way we're looking at it also. But this project doesn't have a line item in the city's twenty twenty-three budget. But the C E C would like to find some ways to pursue this mailer card project. Maybe down the road, we can discuss that. The C E C is also having some very initial discussions around the concept of creating some kind of token. Or virtual coin that can be used to encourage community engagement, possibly something that. Would provide some type of rewards to encourage community. Interactions with places such as the library, City Hall, farmer's market. Or through surveys, projects or various community events. Discussions about this idea are very, very, very much into the early stages. More to come. The C E C is also ready to assist in interacting again in the public during the summer's farmer's market. Survey activities on those Saturdays this year could also involve the use of Zen City. That's my report. Any questions, concerns, compliments? I take them all.
Go ahead.
Yes, Dan.
N F Ts, Mark, you got it. Go for it. That sounds like a lot of fun.
You got it. One other thing I just want to bring up on a side note, we met. We met two weeks ago about barefoot in the park. It's gonna be awesome this year. We're gonna have two bands. We're gonna have a huge car show. It looks like we're gonna have the jumpy toys for the kids. We're gonna have the paint rocks. We're gonna have everything. Plus, plus. You might have heard that Touch the Truck is gonna be canceled this year. Guess what? We're gonna touch a truck there, too. So more to come. Y'all have a good. Oh, one other thing.
Councilmember Cargill, did you have a question? Oh, I thought, sorry. Okay, anybody?
Thank you.
Thanks. Mayor Protem's got a question. Hold up.
Just a thought. Yes, sir. You referred to the splash as a insert?
Yes.
We we have a, we advertise in the splash every month, so is that an option?
We were gonna tie in. There's the idea was we're gonna tie in the the insert with the article. The article and the answer would be as one.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, can I just make one more comment? And Mark, this is kind of food for thought.
Yes.
One of the other things we might want to consider if we're going to make a a budget item for any Zen City ads is doing some targeted Facebook ads as well. Because if people are already online using those platforms, they're more likely to engage.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We could probably spend two thousand and and get a lot of traction.
You bet. The reason for the mailer, just to let you know, is to let people know where to go. There's a, you know, there, I would say seventy percent of people know how to work a computer and people like me, the other thirty percent who are older. No, we we don't go online. We don't do that type of thing. Better get something in the mail or something like that. We're trying to, we're trying to capture everybody if we can when we go to do our surveys type of thing. So thank you.
All right, the Realeak Surin Water District. Don't definitely nobody here, and I definitely don't see anybody online from Surin Water District. So unless I'm missing somebody, we will jump ahead to the next item on our agenda. I lost it again. Hold on. Which is, we are up to no workshop, general business consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Make motion to approve general business consent agenda items ten A, B, and C.
Sorry, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Dunn. All in favor? Or any discussion? Usually not on these. All right, all in favor of approving the general business consent agenda items A, B, and C, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion passes seven zero.
General Business Item eleven A, make a motion to authorize mayor to sign the on-call agreement for landscape maintenance services in the amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars annually.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Dunn. Any questions? Go ahead, councilmember Van Orman.
I did notice that it was the lowest qualified bidder, and there's only one. With Trans Blue Spokane, when it listed flagging and pesticide, it said we'll have. So they currently do not have either one of these available. We not want to go ahead and perhaps take it out and try it again.
Jen's on here. She'll address that.
So I'm gonna have to follow up on on that. Which one did you say? What was your pesticide and what?
It was for both their flagging and their pesticide. Neither one of them had any certifications.
Okay, I'll follow up on that. They were the only ones that bid the the project or bid the the request.
Right.
So if we if we go back out again, it just sets us back that much further. And I know that we can provide some pesticide assistance and some flagging assistance through our city staff who are certified, but I could follow up on that.
Any other questions? All right, not seeing any. All in favor of approving general business item eleven A to approve the on-call agreement for landscape maintenance, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we've got dissenting vote. Councilmember Van Orman, so motion passes six to one. Right, next item.
General Business eleven B, make a motion to authorize mayor to sign the on-call agreement for certified arborist services in the amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars annually.
Second, we have a second by councilmember Kurtz. Any questions on this one? Not seeing any. All right, all in favor of approving general business item B to authorize the on-call agreement for certified arborist services, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seven one.
General Business Item eleven C, make a motion to approve the addendum to Bitco license agreement for permit track software in the amount of fifteen thousand four hundred dollars plus per year, plus any applicable taxes to include annual licensing and maintenance agreement in the amount of ten thousand four hundred and a cloud hosting fee in the amount of five thousand dollars and authorize mayor of a prorata annual maintenance fee to allow the addendum to take effect upon execution.
We have a second. A second by councilmember Kurtz. I'm sure there's questions on this. Lisa has joined us. Any or not? No questions? All right, all in favor of approving item C to approve the addendum to the Bitco license agreement for permit track software, please say aye.
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 All right, any opposed? Not hearing any. Motion passes seven one.
Business Item eleven D, make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to execute parametrics task order number two zero two three dash zero two in the amount of seventy-nine thousand seven hundred eighty dollars for the design of the first phase of an overlay for Sprague Avenue.
Second.
Second by councilmember Cargill. Any questions on this one?
Which section of Sprague Avenue is this?
Multer to city limits.
We have an aerial image. Todd, do you have that? That you can flash up here that may help.
It's basically the one that splits the golf course.
That's Valley Way. Sprague is on the far south.
It's our.
On the south side of the golf course.
Lisa, you wanted to remind everybody where that is. It's Liberty Lake Road to Multer or Multer to the east city limits. Which one?
Multer to east city limits.
I thought.
Thanks.
All right. Any other questions? All right, not seeing any. All in favor of approving item D to authorize parametrics task order two zero two three dash zero two, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion passes seven zero.
General Business Item eleven E, make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to execute parametrics task order number two zero two three dash zero three in the amount of thirty-six thousand three hundred forty-five dollars for the design of a right lane turn, right lane, right turn lane on North Country Vista Boulevard at East Appleway Avenue.
All right, we have a second by councilmember Kurtz. Any questions on this one? All right, not seeing any. All in favor of approving item D, approve of parametrics task order twenty twenty-three dash two, please say aye.
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 Dash three.
Oh, dash three. Sorry, I went in the wrong spot. So I'll restate that. All those in favor of approving item E, approve and authorize the mayor to execute parametrics task order twenty twenty-three dash zero three, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? No, all motion passes seven one, seven zero.
General Business.
Bad day.
General Business Item eleven F, make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to execute parametrics task order number two zero two three dash zero four in the amount of ninety-one thousand one hundred twenty dollars for the design Appleway overlay from Swing Lane to East City Limits.
Second by councilmember Kurtz. Any questions on this one?
I just have one.
Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Not specific to the project, but given that we're doing both item E and item F in the same year, we're gonna do both these tasks at the same time. Lisa, is that right?
That is correct. We're actually gonna bid them together. They will be on two separate two separate schedules so that we can bill them to the appropriate accounts, but they will be done together. We believe there will be an economy of scale by bidding it together.
Figured based on the dates, but I thought I'd ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Not hearing any. All in favor of approving item F, approve and authorize the mayor to execute parametrics task order number twenty twenty-three dash zero four, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Right, not hearing any. Motion passes seven zero.
General Business Item eleven G, make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the additional opioid settlement agreements.
Second, a second by councilmember Kurtz. Sean, did you want to just give us the Reader's Digest version on this? It was a lot of pages. But it's not really giving us any more than the eight, what, eighty-seven dollars a month or a year we were gonna get.
They are essentially the same agreements as before. It's just with other in this case, Walgreens, CVS. So before I was with manufacturers, this time it was more with the distributing aspect of it. So same type of agreements, percentages, I think, are similar as before. It's just this with different providers.
Great, thank you. Going through was what, close to eighty pages or more? Yeah. So thanks for that. All right, any question, Sean?
Yeah, I'm just. I I guess my main question on this is, were were the the distributors and the suppliers found in violation of the law or what what is this? Is this just a cash grab? I kind of asked a similar question the last time we did this, but I'm just kind of curious as to why why these people are being held accountable and having to fork out money unless they were in violation of the law.
I don't know all the specific details, but the 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 ten thousand foot view or the upper level view is it's it's a suit that's been pursued by the Attorney General's Office with regard to opioid addiction and crisis and the belief that the manufacturers and and distributors, I'll call them, you know, were aware of the impacts and and addiction possibilities. There isn't any mission of guilt, if that's what you're asking, or responsibility in any settlement. It's just they agree that they'll pay certain dollars as a result to settle the claims that have been brought by the Attorney General's Office and the state.
Any other questions? Right, not hearing any. All those in favor of item of approving item G, authorize the mayor to sign the additional opioid settlement agreements, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we got one opposed. Councilmember Spencer, so motion passes six to one. Okay, I think that's all our action items. So we are on to council comments. Anything that anybody aside from our upcoming agenda items wants to add on for today? I I will just make a note with the upcoming meeting next week with the library board. You know, the ask was to maybe come come to that meeting with some ideas of some alternate language or whatever. So I haven't seen anything on that. I wasn't necessarily expecting anything, but if you guys do have some ideas, you want to shoot to to Mark and Sean to if they can have a preview. And if you just copy me, I'm gonna be in DC for that meeting. So I apologize ahead of time for that. But if you can, if you have anything on your mind that you want to maybe run by Mark and Sean ahead of time, make sure whatever's being proposed, you know, fits the legal limit, so not, so we can take a look at that beforehand. Okay, anybody else for council comments? All right. We have no public hearings or appeals. We do have resolution twenty-three dash two four five for surplus inventory.
Resolution number twenty-three dash two forty-five, a resolution providing for the disposal of certain inventory items deemed to be surplus to the reasonably foreseeable needs of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington.
Do we have a motion?
I moved.
First by Mayor Protem Foyer.
Second.
Second by councilmember Dunn. Any questions?
I just have one.
Sure, go ahead.
I'm not gonna be able to refer to my notes on my computer since it's stuck on dumb, but I did on on page two oh four of two hundred and forty-five of our agenda. There is, I don't know what line item is, but there's a two thousand twenty-three GMC Sonoma that we're gonna sell for a thousand dollars.
I think it's a typo, but I wanted to check too. That was a question I was gonna ask. Jen, do you happen to know?
If that's true, when's the auction?
Yeah. It does.
It should be two thousand and three, not twenty twenty-three. My apologies.
That's okay, thank you. I was thinking the same.
There was a logical reason there, yeah.
All right, so there's some questions, all in favor of approving resolution twenty-three, sorry, resolution. Is there any public comments on our surplus items? Any online? Todd, anybody? Anybody here? All right, so not hearing any any pu- public comments on resolution twenty-three dash two four five. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero. All right, we are up to ordinances. Before we get on this, Sean, if you can just give a little a little background as to why this this is coming up for another vote, just for clarity.
Yeah, I so I I spoke with, so way back when with regard to Lisa and I, when their issue came up and and trying to go through the process. And when I talked with Kelsey after last week's meeting, she said there was just a motion with regard to amending, so making the amendment to remove remove the exhibit. So from the standpoint of making sure that that amendment was also passed with the ordinance, I just suggested that we put it back on the agenda for this one to pass the ordinance as amended, so there wasn't confusion relative to just a a motion for the amendment itself. And I think with regard to having two meetings for the ordinance would make it appropriate as well. So it's just more of a finality situation as opposed to anything else.
Perfect. Anybody have any questions before Kelsey goes on? All right, go ahead, Kelsey. It's all yours.
Ordinance number two ninety-two, an ordinance of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, amending the city of Liberty Lake Comprehensive Plan and the city of Liberty Lake Development Code.
All right, we have a motion. Oh, wait, not yet. Citizen comments? Any citizen comments in the in the chambers or online on ordinance two ninety-two? Todd, anything? Okay, close citizen comments. All those in favor of.
Is there a motion, Mayor? I'm not sure. Did I hear that?
Yeah, one's coming.
Two ninety-two is.
Perfect, thanks. First by councilmember Dunn. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, second by councilmember Spencer. All those in favor of approving ordinance two ninety-two as amended, please say aye.
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 All right, any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero. All right, no emergency ordinances, introduction of upcoming agenda items. You've got a list in front of you. I was just kind of trying to pencil in some things. On the camping ordinance, Mark, you think we'll be good to do a workshop on that, the second? Well, what would have been the second meeting in April? Well, I guess let me go before I do that. I know we canceled the April fourth meeting. Is there any interested in adding one on the, would that be the eleventh? Or just skipping to the regular second one? Sounds like everybody's nodding their heads on just one meeting. Okay. So that being said, do you think we'd be able to do the workshop on that in late April or no?
We can put that on the agenda and I, based on the progress we made, I think that we'll be ready to do that.
Okay, great. So let's tentatively schedule the camping ordinance for the for the meeting in April. Kyle, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Question.
Yeah.
What what is, since we're we're missing a meeting in April?
Yeah.
What is our plan to continue the discussion on the farmer's market?
That's up to you guys.
Wondering if that should be an April discussion.
We can do that. We'll do that April meeting. We can do that. So that gives us the camping ordinance and that. Kyle, I know you've got a lot of TVDs in here. Would you? Is there anything on on your, either the city insurance or Tiffin Lift that you would want to, if you could or would move into April, or you book definitely May on some of these?
I I think we're in May because I'm still waiting to hear back. So we're holding pattern on this.
Okay, so let's let's at least get camping ordinance and revisit of the farmer's market participation on the April for our workshops. Sound good?
Mayor, based on the public comment, and I've been hearing it, I got a couple of emails on this as well. I'm wondering if we can add a workshop discussion somewhere in maybe May or June, just taking an inventory of our fields that we have available for kids who are are playing in the different leagues, baseball, soccer, those sort of things.
Jen, can you, I think you're still on. Can you pull pull that together for us? I don't, we can, we can schedule a discussion on it, but I know she's got all the information.
Yeah, so you just want to know the usage?
Well, not only that, but maybe we could invite the the league back to kind of share a little more in depth about what they're looking for and have further discussion about it.
All right, well, let's let's get the info out and then, like you said, May or June, let's see what we can do. Does that work, Jen?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, and if and obviously, you know, the workshop next week isn't going, there's not gonna be any decisions come from in that. Do you think it's, is it appropriate then to add a six P M workshop for for the next discussion for the library ordinance? for, for the next discussion of, for the library ordinance? Or you guys want to make that decision during the meeting about when to bring it back into a workshop or a?
Well, technically, the vote that we made was that the second read of the current one would be back on the 18th.
Was it?
So um, I think we probably just leave it there for now, and then if it changes, then we can change it.
That wasn't on here, so thanks for mentioning that. All right. Okay, and if there's anything else you guys want to add to the list during the, over the next few weeks, just uh send Kelsey a note and she'll get it to Mark and I, and we can work through that. Okay, dope. All right, um, we are back up to citizen comments. So once again, if you're in the audience, we had another citizen comment. And then while we have our citizen coming up, um, if there's anybody online that would like to make a citizen comment, please send a note to Todd Henderson, our meeting host in the chat function. And you are here as?
Mark Savah.
Citizen.
Citizen.
Okay. Didn't know.
Of Liberty Lake. That's okay, that's okay. Um, I just wanted uh for next week's uh meeting with the uh council and the uh library board. Is this room gonna be big enough for the attendance? Because I think it's gonna be more people here than there was even at the last meeting. So just food for thought. We might want to move it to a bigger facility.
Right, thanks for the input. Great, thank you. Got it. All right, where's there anybody online? Todd, who'd like to make a comment? Nope, we don't have any. Okay, let's flip back to my agenda again here. All right, we are, um, we are up to our executive session. So we will be adjourning into executive session um per R C W 42 dot 30 dot 144A regarding collective bargaining. Um, I suggest we start with half an hour.
That's probably a good starting.
Okay, we'll start with a half an hour. Um, we will, there'll be no decisions made. We will come out and just adjourn. So um let's uh, we'll be on the executive, we'll go into executive session. Um, council member Salberg, we'll call you. Okay, um, we'll start at about three minutes at 8:15, and we'll plan on being, either being back out here in chambers at 8:45 and or not, or we will pop back on and for an extension.
Should we just stay in here? I mean, I'm wondering if everyone's.
Well, unless somebody, unless you guys want to stay.
Yeah.
Don't even. Well, so Todd, yeah, we can, we'll, we'll still, Tom, Tom will still call you, or we'll shut the Zoom, we'll shut our Zoom down here.
Okay.
Okay, you guys want to take a quick break? Couple minute potty break. We'll be right back. Sean, we'll um.
Figured everyone is.
Hey, Todd, is there a way to see your, Tom and Sean in or how do we want to do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can they send us another Zoom connection?
So Tom and Sean, you will see a, a breakout session invitation.
Okay.
Take you to another room.
Thanks.
You might as well just screen here.
Yeah.
Oh, good call. Sound good.
Ah.
Yeah. Thanks, man.
Little bit more water here.
Oh my goodness.
We are extending our meeting until 9:15. Hi, everybody. We need a little bit more time, and we'll be extending the meeting to 9:45. Thank you. Hi, everybody. Mayor Chris, again, we are going to extend to 9:55 at this point. Thank you. All right, everybody, we are done at executive session. It's 9:55. No decisions were made, so unless I hear any opposed, we are going to adjourn. Meeting adjourned. We will see you in, we have no meeting on, on the 4th of April. We will see you on the 18th.